Okay, we're gonna call the town council meeting to order, but we have a very special group to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so I would, I'd like to ask Troop 441 from Webster Health come up and lead the pledge of allegiance. So come on on this side, come around the podium and come over here.
(inaudible)
Yes. When you're ready.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do you wanna take a picture while you're up here? Can we get everyone in here? Sure, come on girls. Come on this side. Do you want it facing that? I don't know. (inaudible). Okay. Well, I, you know what? I don't care if you're gonna be able to see them. She's the only one that doesn't block mine. (laughing). The chair.
Sorry. The girl scouts are taller than the mayor.
I know, shush. (laughing). Ready, girls? Say, West Hartford.
West Hartford.
Okay, alright, thank you so much for coming. (applause). Alright, thank you very much. While they're sitting down, we can take attendance, Ms. LeBrow. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Ms. Kasperson's absent, Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan.
Here.
Mr. Wenigret.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. Number four, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the approval of the minutes of the town council meeting of nine twenty-seven twenty sixteen, the minutes of the public hearing ordinance revising policies and procedures for the collection of refuge, nine thirteen twenty sixteen, and approval of the minutes of the public hearing, the ordinance amendment application on behalf of Lexum West Hartford Owner LLC of nine twenty-seven twenty sixteen.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Public forum. We have a section in the town council where people can speak for, for two minutes unless they're a member of a group, that would be for five minutes, on things that are unrelated to a public hearing, but relate to something on the town council agenda. I have somebody that signed up, Don Bailey, coming up. And state your name and address for the record and the number, the item number that you're referring to speaking. Then you're here, you're here. Thank you. No problem.
Is it in relation to the ordinance in consideration for establishments?
We are holding a public hearing on that and you're welcome to come and speak on that. Thank you.
(inaudible).
Thank you so much. Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that is in the audience that would like to speak to something on the agenda but not subject to a public hearing? Okay, thank you so much. Number six, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to place items sixteen and seventeen on the consent calendar.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, Mr. Davidoff.
Item number eight is an ordinance establishing procedures for licensing and public safety police details at entertain establishment. I move we set for public hearing on October twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, at six thirty PM in the legislative chamber.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that's when you can call Mr. Bailey and speak. Okay, number nine, Mr. Davidoff.
I move we adopt a resolution concerning zoning in the central business B.C. zone.
Motion's been made in seconded. Mr. Van Winkle, would you like to?
Yes, I have our Director of Community Services, Mark McGovern. He's going to speak on this item and the following item.
You're welcome, Mark.
Good evening, Mark McGovern, Community Services Director. This resolution is a follow-up to your last meeting on September twenty-seventh in regards to the zoning ordinance that was considered that evening. Staff has been directed in this resolution, dictates this, directs the staff to start neighborhood outreach and work with a neighborhood working group to look at the issues related to the B.C. zone and impacts on surrounding neighborhood, the issues that were discussed in the public hearing on the twenty-seventh and also discussed in an earlier hearing in, in the springtime. And so, we're prepared to set up a process and working with the neighbors, which would involve several meetings and we anticipate two public forums as part of that. We expect it to take a few months. We've already had good discussions with Scott Falk, who's here this evening, who we've met with twice, about the right way to go about doing that. So we feel confident that we'll be able to have our first meeting in early November and be back to you in a few months with our findings.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. Anybody have any, Mr. Van Winkle, did you have something? No? Anybody have any questions? Yes, Ms. Hall.
I'm just wondering if we could be a little bit more specific on who is going to be in that group, when we're going to have that. I know you said sometime in early November, but A, how, how are people going to find out about it? How do they get more information in case someone is interested? And, you know, I'm just worried that it's still a little bit vague and I think we need to button everything down.
Yeah, it is. We're, we haven't finalized the, the, the membership, so to speak, of the working group, but we are focusing on sort of the very specific zoning matters. We want to make sure that the discussion is focused and we think we need to have a relatively small working group, probably no more than ten people, made up of staff, neighbors, and some commercial property owners as well. So we're working to identify the right candidates to do that. Certainly, we're gonna start the discussion by going through, sort of the basics of planning and, and sort of have a bit of a planning one-on-one session, so to speak, to, to ground the group in the principles that we're dealing with that are part of our zoning ordinances. From there, it's gonna be a little bit fluid, but we anticipate that by having two public workshops, we'll likely seek the assistance of a, a planning consultant to help facilitate that. And we most certainly publicize that and do what we can to get a much broader participation and a bigger, a bigger audience, so to speak, that can provide input in this process along the way.
And just by way of background, how long have you and your staff been working on this project to update our zoning FAR ratios?
At least a year, I would say.
And was, was the application or the change that was brought forward something that the town had expected would meet our needs and was in keeping with the plan of conservation and development?
Yes, it was. The, the original FAR ordinance, so to speak, that was introduced last spring, it was worked through committee and, and done within sort of the, the goals and objectives of the plan of conservation and development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. Any other question? Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any other questions? Okay, so I will, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And number ten, Mr. Davidoff.
I move we adopt the resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a special use license with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Motion's been made in seconded. And Mr. McGovern, I think you're addressing this too. Thank you.
Still Mark McGovern, still Community Services Director. So the resolution before you would authorize a town manager to execute a special use license with DEEP, and this is sort of the first step in our Park Road eighty-four interchange project. In time, you will receive an easement from DEEP, which you would need to approve. That's taking a little while, and so this is sort of an initial step that'll allow us to do some important work in advance of the start of the project. And that work really is, is, is the relocation of utility lines, and so there are some trees that he, need to come down so that the utility lines can be moved prior to the start of the project. In some cases, it's in the town right away, in other cases, it's on DOT property, but there's one section of land that's DEEP property, and this use license would permit us the right to go on to that area of land right next to the entrance ramp to eighty-four to be able to take four trees down.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. Do you want to just to give a really brief description of the eighty-four project and just to give people a little context?
Sure. Our, we've been working for several years now collaboratively with the Department of Transportation to make a major transportation improvement at Park Road and eighty-four. In general, the, the main aspect of the improvement is to move the exit ramp from its current location next to the current entrance ramp. In addition, there will be two left-hand turn lanes to go along with the two existing right-hand turn lanes, and the spacing between the traffic lights in that area will be, will be lengthened, and that's really gonna help congestion. We see this as a way of really improving safety on this, on this, at this intersection. Both on the off-ramp, which is sort of a dangerous crest curve, and it makes it difficult for people to see as they come off the highway and weave into a turn lane, but it's also gonna create better opportunities at the intersection of Troutbrook Drive and Park Road and Park Road and Raymond Road. So with these improvements, we think we'll, we'll decrease congestion, we'll reduce air pollution, we're gonna make it much safer for pedestrians. The project will also include a eight-foot wide sidewalk that will run from Troutbrook Drive all the way to Raymond Road. So all those things together, it's, it's quite a significant project and quite extraordinary that DOT would permit our town engineers to design part of their highway system, and that's, that's really what's happening, which is quite exciting.
And these are federal funds and some state funds that are, that are available?
Yeah, it's, it's, I think, believe a fifty, forty, ten project, where fifty percent is federal, forty percent state, ten percent town participation. All the funding flows, the federal funding flows through the state DOT.
Yes, thank you. I, the Mayor Sufka and I had met with Senator Murphy, and he was instrumental in making this, highlighting that the importance and safety of this project. So, any questions for Mr. McGovern on this?
I can preempt one. When might it start, aside from some of this initial work? We're getting our final approval, approvals from the DOT this fall. We'll be out to bid the project in the wintertime with, with the goal of starting in the spring two thousand seventeen.
Sure, there will be a lot more to follow on traffic and all that when it happens. So, alright, thank you very much. So all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, Mr. Davidoff.
I move we adopt a resolution to appropriate forty-one thousand in the fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget of the capital and non-recurring expenditure fund for the purchase of snowplow equipment.
Motion's been made in seconded. Mr. Phillips is coming up from Director of Public Works to tell us about this. Thank you.
John Phillips, Director of Public Works. Good evening. The resolution you have before you is to purchase, just update some advanced equipment for our snowplows and update a couple of our older plows. The number forty-one thousand came from equipment that we sold at surplus auction, old outdated cars, stuff that just was beyond its service life, and so that's why we came up with the number of forty-one thousand. And then we went out looking at some of the equipment. One of the drivers to this resolution was a new type of snowplow blade. It's a carbide blade that's encoded in a rubber compound, and it's sectional. Conventionally, what we use now, what majority of the industry's using now, but again, we're all trying to switch and find that next best thing to do, snow plowing, we just use a steel blade, just steel on asphalt and we run. You hear us every night and, and it's loud and it's damaging, damaging both to the truck, and this is just steel and welds, it's damaging to the roads, but that, there's just inherent ills to that process. These blades are just starting to be engineered that we're gonna take a look at. We're gonna buy six of them in total and test them in six different spots throughout the town. That rubber coating carbide system will be quieter on the rub. You won't need as much lubrication, the water, for, to reduce the friction, but they're flexible. Each one comes about a one-foot section, so not only do they flex this way, but they also flex up and down. So when you hit a structure that's in the middle of the road, the rest of your blade will stay, adhere to the road, and that will flex just over the manhole structure that may be in the road. So you're still maintaining contact. Right now, if we were to do that under the old technology of straight steel, the whole plow would bounce up, leave us a section of road unplowed, and the truck continues on, but there'll be a section of road that's full of snow. Some cases, you leave the whole pile, whatever's carrying your blade and being rolled over will get just dumped off, and then the truck's gotta make a round robin to come back and pick that up. That happens actually quite often. It's just, again, an ill to that type of technology. This will get us further along. There is a safety component of this because it's a softer, it absorbs that energy, it doesn't come through the blade, through the truck, and through the driver's hands. And I'm sure you've all felt it in just your own car, you hit a bump, you feel that jar. Well, picture yourself doing twenty miles an hour in a big truck and you hit something that can almost stop the truck. So we're hopeful this blade works in talking to other communities that are using it, mainly up north, Minnesota, Canada's using this extensively, they're seeing three-year shelf lights for this blade, which is a good thing. Straight steel, we can go, sometimes you're going to two and three blades a night on one truck, but a blade never really goes more than one or two storms if you don't break it before then. So we're hopeful we'll get the shelf life out of it. Again, our roads are different than Minnesota and Canada, so we've gotta see how that works out, but we're certainly hopeful we'll get more than a season or two out of this new technology. And then also on that money, we're just gonna, we have many plows that are ninety-three era vintage bought, and they're really old, they have more than enough welds on them that we just can't weld them anymore to keep them serviceable, and so we're just looking to replace a complete apparatus of the whole plow.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any questions for Mr. Phillips? Always looking for creative new ways to do things more efficiently.
Trying our best.
Not gonna get snow this winter, though, right?
No, I hope not.
No. Alright, yes, Mr. Van Winkle.
Well, we have them up here, and I'm gonna ask them for the weather forecast because we do get long-term weather forecasts that takes a look at what we might expect in winters. Last winter, the forecast was fairly accurate as to a warmer, less snowy winter. This year's gonna be a little different.
Yeah, we, we subscribe to our service called Weatherworks. It's a national weather service company. It's like having your own weather meteorologist working for the town of West Hartford. We, I can call him right now on my cellphone, and he'll let me know if that shower is gonna take tonight or not. So it's been a great service, they're very accurate. We've been using them for the past four or five seasons. They give us snow risk analogies, they let us know weeks in advance what our risks might be over the next couple of weeks. So we have a high level of confidence with our weather service. And yeah, last year, they predicted it. Actually, the last couple of years, they were, they're really close to what they think. And the reports they give us are really in-depth, and it gets beyond the commercialization of weather reports. It gets to why you'll see weather in certain ways, through reverse oscillation and positive oscillations and El Ninos and La Nina, all those things like that. This year, they're all looking for a cold winter. I think everybody's in unisonce that it's gonna be cold. The big question mark, will there be precipitation? That, that will be the big question mark, whether, will, will we be in that jet stream that generates moisture that will come up in the colder that should be in place? And then so if that's the case, then we'll see, we'll see our average amount of snow, if not a little bit more, but if there's no moisture, there's no snow. But let's also, we are in a drought, the whole state is, the whole New England, New England region's really in a drought. Snow doesn't cure droughts because most snow evaporates before it turns to a water and gets in the system. Certainly helpful, we don't wanna go a year without any snow. It certainly could benefit us, but, you know, we are in a drought and sometimes those patterns can hang on for a long time before you see a real positive change in that weather, weather pattern. But my prediction is a cold winter and probably just an average amount of snow.
Thank you very much. I should've checked.
Public record now writes, so I'll give me help to it.
(laughing). Should've checked with you before I put my son's wedding date. Oh, well. Alright, thank you, that's really helpful.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Phillips? While he's here? Again, thank you very much for your.
My pleasure.
Number, oh, reports from the town manager, number twelve, Mr. Van Winkle.
So, I, most people think we just go out.
Do we not vote on that? Okay. All those, I'm sorry, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So most people think we start the plows up and go off into the night and plow, even snow plowing is a science, if you will, science of the weather, a science of the machinery. You know, we've changed our snowplows rather than just casting lots of salt out, there actually have regulators depending on the temperature of the, of the road. John's truck, as he drives around, he can tell you what the temperature of the road is, and that helps us determine how much salt we put out on our, our streets. So it's a fascinating field that's changed dramatically in the last decade. But before the snow comes, we have autumn, and our ten-week leaf bag collection will begin October twenty-fourth. So if you are out raking your yard, you can put your, your leaf bag at the edge of the road, you can put it out on Monday and during your trash collection day. We will come every week for ten weeks and pick up your leaf bags. Only thirty-gallon biodegradable leaf bags are collected, no plastic bags, don't put garbage in them, we're collecting leaves that we're, we then recycle. They shouldn't weigh more than sixty pounds. If you can get sixty pounds of leaves in a bag, God bless you, huh? So if you just get that bag out by six AM on your trash day or sooner, or the day before, or the, the truck will go by your house every week and pick up the, the leaves that are out there. The police department is running a recruitment fair and open house on October twenty-ninth from twelve to four PM. We are down seven officers in our police force, and so we are recruiting new police officers for the West Hartford Police Department. If you've always wondered what it might be like to work for a police department, here's your chance to get an inside look. You come to our West Hartford Police Station, we're hiring, we would like to attract applicants and have them come and take a look at what a career in law enforcement might be. And so our recruitment job fair and open house is on Saturday, October twenty-ninth, from twelve to four, at our, our West Hartford Police Station. Members of the Training Division, Community Relations, will explain the hiring process and help, and many other residents will be on hand to explain the, the role of a police officer in a community. It's, this is a really a great community to be an officer in. We have a, an incredibly well-trained police force in our community that keeps us safe. And so if someone is looking for a, a different career or a first career, that can be very rewarding, then this is a great example of where you might try. And it never hurts to stop by on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, and hear what that job might be. GenTech smoke alarms are available. The fire department has instituted a program for providing smoke alarms to persons who have hearing impairments, and these smoke alarms are free. The special GenTech smoke alarms contain a powerful strobe light that has proven to be effective in waking persons who are deaf or hard of hearing. The alarms were purchased through a grant from Factory Mutual Insurance. That's the insurance company that the town uses for most of its buildings. If, to obtain one, you need to just call the fire department, eight-six-zero-five-six-one-eight-three-two-zero. Look us up in the, on, I'm gonna say look us up in the phone book, but look us up online, you can get the number for the fire department. Again, programmed, these are free and available to those who have hearing impairments. That's really all I have tonight, it's a very short agenda. If you have some questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Van Winkle. Anybody have questions for the town manager? No? Okay. We're moving on to number thirteen. I have a few announcements, and we will, if anyone else has them, after me. We are, the town is seeking new members for the Substance Abuse Prevention Commission. The West Hartford Substance Abuse Prevention Commission has, needs new members that will be appointed by the town council, so if you have an interest, please let us know. The commission's mandate is to advise the council on ways that it may help address the problems of substance abuse in the entire West Hartford population. If you are interested, please contact the Joanna Curry, Sarah Tori, the Joanna, I guess, Sarah Tori at the Bridge Family Center at eight-six-zero-three-one-three-one-one-one-nine, extension one oh nine, or Joanna at BridgeFamilyCenter, one word, dot org. The deadline is October nineteenth, twenty sixteen. Flu immunization clinics, Wednesday, October thirteen, nineteen, and twenty. The West Hartford Bloomfield Health District is offering two upcoming flu immunization clinics to the community. Wednesday, October nineteenth, twelve to two. Thursday, October twentieth, twelve to, ten to twelve, sorry, on that one, and that's all I have on that. I don't know about the thirteenth, isn't, the hours aren't listed. Thirteenth Annual Celebrating Gifts of Music Benefit Concert, Saturday, October fifteenth, at seven-thirty. John Mastriani and friends and the fabulous vocalist, Alita Moses, a talented graduate of West Hartford Public Schools, will perform as special guest at the Thirteenth Annual Celebrating Gifts of Music Benefit Concert at the Intensive Education Academy. Tickets are twenty-five dollars. Visit www.giftsofmusic.us. They're very talented, Alita's really great. Family Outdoor Flea Market, Saturday, October fifteenth, at the Elmwood Community Center, from nine to three. If you're a bargain hunter, don't miss the fabulous deals. Rain Event is Sunday, October sixteenth. Blood Drive at Town Hall, Monday, October seventeenth, twelve to five-thirty. October is Liver Awareness Month and Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The American Red Cross encourages eligible donors to give blood in support of liver and other transplant patients, as well as those fighting cancer. A blood drive will be held on Monday, October seventeenth, twelve to five-thirty at the town hall, or call one-eight-hundred-red-cross to make an appointment for that or somewhere else. Little Shop of Horrors Night Through, October sixteenth, at Playhouse on Park, box office. Tickets are thirty-five to fifty dollars. WWW.PLAYHOUSEONPARK.org for your tickets, or visit the box office. Candidates Forum, Tuesday, October eighteenth, eight AM. Well, but you can hear from Chris Barnes, running for state rep. Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring Candidates Forum in preparation for upcoming election in November. Economic development will be the focus of discussion on Tuesday, October eighteenth, at eight AM at Atria Hamilton Heights. This event is free for Chamber members, ten dollars for non-members to register, go to the Chamber website. West Hartford Hauntings, October twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. Noah Webster House Spooky Theatrical Cemetery Tour returns for its twelfth year. Lantern Lit Tours takes place at the North Cemetery on Fridays and Saturdays. Tour leaves every fifteen minutes from six to eight forty-five and runs for forty-five minutes. Guests are escorted through the stones by a dearly departed guide. Tickets are fifteen dollars for adults and ten dollars for children. Call Noah Webster House at five-eight-six-zero-five-two-one-five-three-six-two. guide. Tickets are $15 for adults and $10 for children. Call Noah Webster House at 860-521-5362. Brews for a Cause, Friday, October 21st, 6:00 to 9:00 at the Playhouse on Park. Bubbling Fun and Merriment on, let's see, what are the hours? Yeah, 6:00 to 9:00. $40 tickets and maximum beverage. You can get them at either Playhouse on Park or Maximum Beverage, or online. National Take Back Day, Saturday, October 22nd, 10 to 2. The West Hartford Police Department and the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District are coordinating a collection of unwanted and unused pharmaceutical-controlled substances and other medicine during National Take Back Day. Collection activities will take place in the Town Hall parking lot from 10 to 2. Program is anonymous and free of charge. It's important that those not go in the water stream. United Methodist Church Annual Harvest Fair, Saturday, October 22nd, 9 to 2. Stop by at the United Methodist Church to browse lovely craft items, home accessories, seasonal items, fall and winter, and indulge at the bakery booth for homemade pies, breads, cakes, and cookies. Then go to the silent auction, White Elephant, collectible booths, and visit the pumpkin patch. Admission is free. Church is located at 1358 New Britton Avenue. Symphony Orchestra, 2016 Autumn Concert on Sunday, October 23rd at 3:00 PM. It opens its 15th, the West Hartford Symphony Orchestra opens its 15th anniversary season with Ravel's Piano Concerto on Sunday, October 23rd at 3:00, in the Roberts Auditorium of Kingswood Oxford School. The WHSO will feature symphony favorites from over its 15-year repertoire. For tickets, please call 860-521-4362. Also, tickets will be sold at the door. The Mandel JCC Jewish Book Festival opens October 23rd at 1:00 PM. Best-selling author Jennifer Weiner, who debuted her moving memoir, Hungry Heart: Adventures in Life, Love, and Writing, on Sunday, October 23rd at 1:00. Tickets are $40 per person and includes the book and meet the author reception. You can get those offers at Mandel JCC on their website. Tickets at mandeljcc.org or 860-231-6316. West Hartford Public Mentors Program Workshop will be held on Tuesday, October 25th. Think of mentors in your young life, a team, a coach, a teacher, concern neighbor, or another caring adult. It can change a young person's life. The program workshop is October 25th, 6:30 to 7:45 at Conard High School, Room 169. To sign up, go to carolwilkes@whps.org. And the last thing I have is the Halloween Stroll, Saturday, October 29th, 10:30 to 12:30. Costume children of all ages are invited for a fun morning in the West Hartford Center and Blueback Square for Moms and more of West Hartford's annual Halloween Stroll on Saturday, October 29th, 10:30 to 12:30, and there will be kid-friendly music prizes, food giveaways, and a fire truck. And if anybody else has others, I'd be glad to hear from you, but I know there is also a trick-or-treating event at Conard that is free, and I have some information on, I have to find it. Oh, I did not. I left something for you.
I just wanted to point out that if you're watching this on TV, it's through West Hartford Community TV. We've got an award-winning local TV station run by Jen Evans, and they're having a fundraiser on October 28th, Friday evening at 7:00 PM at Wampanoag Country Club on Wampanoag Drive in West Hartford. You can go to the website to order your tickets online, which is whctv.org, or I'm sure if you email jennifer@westharfordct.gov, she would also get you hooked up with tickets. So I hope you can make it and support our wonderful TV station.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Carrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. October 29th, the Orange Bowl. It's a Halloween birthday bash, celebrating United, Unified Theater, celebrating 15 years. It's at the Town Hall. It's from 7:00 to 11:00 on Saturday, October 29th.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Carrigan. Anybody else? I cannot, I know. I know. There's a lot going on. October is not a sleepy month.
That was longer than our meeting.
Yes. It's true. All right. Well, I'm going to come up with that Conard date. It's a great thing that the Conard offers for little kids to trick-or-treat, and I can't find it. Anyway, I think that's all we have on that. Now we go to reports from Corp Counsel. Yes.
First of all, Pat sends his regrets. He'll be back with you for the next town council meeting. There is no need for an executive session, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Bonham? No? Thank you very much. Number, we have no appointments. Number 16, Mr. Davidoff.
Number 18 would be the, I move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Motion's been made a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 19, Mr. Davidoff.
I move we receive the resignation of Beth Lander Morris from the Conservation and Environment Commission.
Motion's been made a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Miss, number 20.
I move we receive the resignation of Concetta Mello, also known as Connie Mello, resigning from the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission.
Motion's been made a second. All those in favor? I think Mrs. Hall has something to say. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I just wanted to point out that Connie Mello has really done a great job on the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, and we accept her resignation with regrets and thank her for her services, I'm sure we also do for Beth Morris on CEC. So, thank you. As we heard tonight, there's definitely a need for people to volunteer on different boards and commissions, and if you have any interest in volunteering in town, I know we will need to replace Connie on the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. There's more information about all the boards and commissions on the town's website, so I hope you can support those commissions as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Okay. Number, no petitions, no executive session. Number 23, Mr. Davidoff.
Move we adjourn.
Motion's been made a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?